I know.
You're right.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did we have any other one?
No.
Well, we call a meeting to order and I'll wait for approval of the agenda as printed.
Any additions or corrections? Motion to approve.
Oh, second.
We have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, approved of minutes from ten, eleven.
I read through them and they all look good. I see that one change has been made, so we're good.
What change did you see?
Well, it did say, um, Rick Peterson opened the meeting.
Well, no. Okay, you got that correct.
Oh, I just looked and it's there, so.
Okay, okay, yep.
Okay.
Well, I would second that then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, okay, now with public concerns.
Nobody on.
Nobody on Zoom? Okay, we'll move on to.
Yeah.
Oh, is that why?
Yep.
And request on the City of Laverne to, um, have this tax sale certificate, the same to them, this does, delinquent taxes and current year taxes, penalty, updated. The majority of this, um, for tax sale certificate is two city specials from the City of Laverne totaling eighty-four hundred dollars when they remotes the house on the property. But they're wanting to clean it up and, or finish the process and take ownership. They've talked to the property owner and he's actually willing to give them a put claim deed, so they're just kind of deciding which way would be faster and cleaner, if they do the tax sale direction or the put claim deed. And I thought, well, we'll just get this all rolling.
So that was their thought, then this was the quickest way to accomplish their goal?
That's kind of, they're not sure. They just wanted to have this avenue available and then they needed to have the taxes abated anyway once they take ownership of the property.
So their intentions, they claim the property, then they're gonna try to sell it to get it back on the tax roll, is that?
Is that right?
She didn't say what her intention was.
Here, I thought she was gonna be.
She's here.
Oh, me, you ever.
I'm sorry, I didn't know that was you, so I'll let you ask her.
Yeah, I guess, um, this property, um, is just pretty much grass and trees right now. Um, the city's been paying, or been taking care of it all these years, been mowing it, um, just that. And the owner of it called the city one day and wanted to know if they would take it if he gave it to him. Well, we found out all of the expenses.
Back taxes.
Yeah, and so the city's willing to take it over and keep it mowed and keep it like we have been, but they wanted to make sure they weren't gonna get stuck with the back taxes on it, 'cause if they did, they weren't, they didn't want it.
They didn't wanna cough up the money.
No, they just felt. So that's kind of why I'm here, to see if we agree to this gentleman's request to take it from him, if we basically can get anything wiped out that we can, that, I realize some of it's like the drainage, maybe.
I didn't see any, didn't see any drainings here, but.
I think we'll talk about it if there was that enough.
Yeah. And then obviously the city would, um, you know, get rid of all their stuff that they, you know, had on there too. So that's kind of where we're at right now, is they don't really know what your thoughts are on it versus, you know.
Does this just amount to a lot, or how big of?
It's some, a dollar a lot?
No, 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 size. Is it just a bare lot, or?
Yeah, it's like seven little lots.
Seven little lots?
Yeah.
No buildings?
Not anymore, nothing.
I don't think so, yeah. I drove by it once, it kind of sits out back, um, south of the town.
Is it in the city limits?
Yeah, it's right on the edge of the city.
Okay, but it's just bare lots?
Yeah, it's just grass right now and some trees, I think, kind of sporadically around it, but yeah. It's kind of a long, thin lot, 'cause I think the lot.
Oh, big one, okay.
Yeah. So, uh, yeah, that's kind of where we're sitting at right now. And he keeps calling me every day, "You heard anything?" So I know, for some reason, he wants to get rid of this. And like I said, the city's already taking care of it. We've got, we've got lots and lots of money that we've never collected, that we've never turned in on, uh, anything to the, to the courthouse for being reimbursed, so.
Well, it'd be better that they.
He wants to get out of the money.
Yeah, yeah, he does.
He doesn't wanna pay.
No, and he doesn't wanna pay the city and doesn't wanna pay the taxes and so on.
No, I, I'm not even sure where it lives at, to tell you the truth.
Would be much better if this ended up back to the city, and that's the ultimate goal. In Tiana, he said he didn't have a problem with this, the tax abatement thing.
Well.
Another question?
But it sounds like you can't get blood on a turn.
No.
You're not gonna, we're not gonna get the money either, one way or the other, he's not gonna.
Forty-two hundred, let's move on, see.
My thing is, I just need to know what to tell the town for, and that, you mean, if it's gonna be, if it's gonna be okay to go ahead and take this.
So basically, we gotta give you the okay, 'cause we really can't do this until later, right? Or can we do it now?
Can do it now, and then they can decide.
They.
What they're gonna do with that then?
Yeah, they just need to know if it's okay to.
If it's gonna be evaded.
Mowing tax part of it. Well, I would make the motion.
Well, they'll follow that penalty.
Yeah, twenty-one, twenty-two of it is penalty.
And eighty-four hundred of it's the city's own expense, not accounting.
Well, to keep it moving forward, I would make the motion of the approval of the, uh, assignment of the tax sale certificate to the City of Laverne.
I'll say that.
I got a question.
Yep.
I mean, it's a fair amount of money, if this guy's got money, maybe you should just go after and make him pay his bill.
We asked for eight, nine years.
They've got forty-two hundred of that is mowing, so they've been doing it for a while.
Or there's still more that hasn't been.
Has the City of Laverne attempted to get money out of the.
Have you attempted to get money out of this guy?
I think they did, during, I don't know, I've only been there a year and a half, so I don't know what they've done before that. I, I, I didn't even know, never talked to the guy till he called on the phone. And then they did kind of talk about it at the last meeting, and they're like, well, we're not getting stuck with any of that, you know, we'll, why don't we take the property and keep it up and mow it and all that, if. And like they said, they, you know, maybe, hopefully, they could get it sold to somebody so that could generate taxes and revenue back on it again. You know, somebody wanted to put up a storage shed or, um, house, yeah, I think it's in a nice little spot back there, kind of by itself and, but it's just a matter of finding the right person that would do that, in small town.
Well.
You got another question?
Yeah, well, I mean, it sounds like a great idea, but probably a moot point.
Yeah, I didn't know if they'd attempted to collect any money from this guy.
Yeah, I, I don't know the guy.
But the problem is, you put a lien against the property, that he doesn't give a crap about anyway.
Yeah, what?
He don't have no leverage.
There's a chance of, like you said, maybe with the city owning it and someone wanting to even build something, they would purchase it and at least it would get back in the taxes for the city and the county.
Very close to the co-op's property too, isn't it? The co-op's property?
It is a little bit south, I guess something south.
And east.
Yep, that's it, those lots. It's south, it's, it's the farthest south part of Laverne. I mean, there's still more than the city limits, but that's, that's.
Far, it's getting plodding.
Yes, yep, yeah, it's south and east of the, of the elevator.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Now, we have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Objections, motion carries.
And then it does say, approve abated penalties and interest. Now, I don't know, you didn't, I didn't make that motion, but I'll make that motion as well, 'cause it's two bullet points. I guess I'll approve the abated penalties and interest, motion that as well. No.
Okay, we have a first.
Second.
Second, Sandy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Just because it was two bullet points. I'm, I'm been sitting by Dave's.
You're just standing in favor by putting it on the backside.
You know the guy?
Yeah.
Not gonna give you money.
Ain't got a fuck to piss on, you guys.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Remember the little wagon wheel up there?
Yeah, yeah.
Just having that. He's dead.
This guy's dead.
Dean Senior. Oh, you're not gonna get blood out of a rock.
I just wanted to say, when you could ask for if that ever comes back on the market, that they repick some of that cotton.
Not really.
Well, like you said, thirty-one thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, it's a shame, you know, somebody just sat there and just never paid their bill for so many years.
I know, so it's funny that went on that long with that amount of.
For forty-two hundred dollars in mowing, they must've been mowing it for a long time.
Well, that's the assumption they've been doing it.
That they didn't pursue this to come to.
If they charged you a hundred bucks a time, that's forty-two times, which they could easily deal over several years.
Yes.
Eventually, they charge you a hundred bucks for that much.
Yeah. Right, can I ask you another question? Why, how, how many years was it that the?
Since two thousand twelve.
Two thousand twelve?
Well, I knew the taxes are, I went to a public county, there's a public certificate in, from the, 'cause the two thousand ten, eleven taxes weren't paid.
So that was.
And he's been notified every year of what's out there and.
He inherited the property?
Oh, is that right?
And just did not care.
He didn't.
Okay.
Lived there for a while.
Yeah, probably tried to sell it or something, I mean, you know what I mean, it just, I don't know.
Well, the problem was, if he sold it, the money would all go.
Yeah.
Yeah, they could've done that back in two thousand ten.
Yeah, back then.
Yeah, way back.
Got actually something and then.
Something of it, got out of it.
It's a nice house there.
Oh, really?
It was.
Used to be a nice house there on them lot.
So I'm assuming that the city pays to tear the house down?
I bet it wasn't not, can't leave it set for a few years and let it.
No.
They just deteriorated it.
Yeah, and then we get in there, yeah.
Oh, I know exactly where that is, then, okay. All right, Ben, looks like you're up next. Good morning.
First item I've got on the agenda is to approve change order number one for the box over at the White Moon's Run down on Washington Avenue. When they were doing a cleanup, they found a tile that was hidden in the grass and hooked it with their bucket and the thing was collapsed and plugged, so they dug back to find good tile and we supplied the material, they supplied the labor, basically. And they requested five hundred and twenty-five dollars to cover the cost of their excavator and their two guys working on it.
You know what, uh, was this a drainage district tile or a private tile?
This was a private tile.
It was a private tile.
But if we run it through this way, uh, the DOT will fund a hundred percent of it.
Okay, so we'll get reimbursed for that from the DOT then? Oh, okay.
Make a motion to approve the change order for five hundred and twenty-five dollars, second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, no more discussion and debate. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The second item I've got on the agenda is to accept the hiring of Jeff Hobson out of the Hardy Shop.
He's a good kid.
Brian, who retired after thirty-six years.
You know.
With the, uh, starting at the apprentice rate of twenty-three dollars and sixty cents pending, uh, drug, uh, passing drug tests in, in DOT's court.
Where's he from?
Livermore.
Hmm. You know, did.
I do him.
He worked for the prison for a while.
Yeah, so he's at prison right now.
Yeah, okay.
I'd make a motion to hire Jeff Hobson.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Then we are, on these new hires, are they, all the criteria for the CDO and all that stuff?
He's got the.
Oh, he already has that?
Yep.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, we, uh, we had eleven applicants for.
That's what I was, next question.
We arranged interviewing six, uh, one of them called back and he'd already accepted another position somewhere else, so he took his name off the list, so we interviewed five, uh, over the course of last week and sat and had a powwow with Dave, Denny and myself and selected Jeff.
Okay, only, and I think you, well, maybe you've mentioned it, silver hiring people for, you know, different shops. Uh, there, a lot of them are ways away from their shop, 'cause you said this guy lives in Livermore?
This guy's in Livermore, yeah.
And he works out of the Hardy Shop.
He'll work out of the Hardy Shop, yeah. I mean, Hardy being the size of town that it is.
Very much so, but I mean, and, yeah, I guess he'd either live by it or, yeah. It's just the nature of it, I guess, but, and granted, that's only gonna come to pass in the dead of winter.
We interviewed, uh, we interviewed a guy from Livermore, Renwick, Goldfield, Humboldt and Fort Dodge. So, kind of a scatter pattern.
Yep.
I mean, the, the way the job description's listed is, uh, county residence is preferred but not required. We just require that they get their.
I was gonna say show up.
We've, we've had guys that, uh, we hired that lived close to the shed that they were working out of and then they'd move after they'd gotten the job. Uh, I had one guy that was living in Mason City for a year.
Wow.
And he made it to work every day.
That's a commitment.
It boils down to, you know, how willing you're, or how committed you are to your job, you're just trying to get there.
You can be two blocks away and someone might not show up, and I've had that before.
If, if it's supposed to snow, the, the guys are really good at packing an overnight bag and staying at the shop.
Okay.
Sheds are nice enough now, they pack into the wash bay and find the seat and.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm driving at, is, you know, back in the day, when the little shops were scattered throughout the county, guys lived in that town to be able to get out of it, you know. Long days, unfortunately, get those bad snows and people have to get to there to get the equipment.
We had, um, I think it was last year, there was a bad enough storm, uh, Tom had to drive his tractor in.
Nice.
You know, from his place to basically open up the yard so that.
Open up the shop, yeah.
Yeah.
You make a good employee.
Good.
I mean, not knowing any of the guys personally, you always.
Well, it's good to hear, that's what we're after, to be very conscientious and. He was on the search team for a while, way back.
Okay.
And, yeah, he's a very good guy.
Excellent. Excellent, wanna get.
Yeah.
Okay, now we're gonna bounce down here to accept and place on file auditor's quarterly report ending in September. And being we have our auditor sitting here, is there anything?
It's pretty self-explanatory, just the transfer fees primarily, some passport and some, um, fees that we've received. Um, maps and plots are down because we're completely out of plot books.
Really?
And, I mean, like, ten years before even, 'cause we were selling those cheaper because people were wanting something.
Oh, so you got rid of the old ones, plus the new ones?
Mm-hmm, and we're still waiting on this year, so.
I still wonder what the reasoning is for that.
Shipping.
No, I mean, why are people buying?
No, oh, I thought you meant why are they waiting for them, 'cause everything's waiting. Yeah, I wonder why people are, do they update them every so many years, or?
Every year they're.
Every year.
So then, is there not much land change?
That, that could be it, a lot of people are just, wanna see who's bought what.
Trying to find hunting ground.
Trying to find you out. Interesting.
Motion to approve. Accept or whatever.
Okay, we have a first and a second, any more discussion? Motion carries. Okay, now we have approved liquor license for riddle-felly orchards and wine.
Okay, this is just our annual renewal, um, the effective date is actually November twentieth, but it's up on the board, up in the system, so we're just looking for approval for that and issue the license, so.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in order, eh?
Yes.
We have a first and a second, more discussion on the booze license. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we're down to authorize chairman to sign the annual certificate with the army material status for our Hollitzer.
Okay, so this is a yearly thing, um, there's been going through some.
Have we painted it?
Huh?
Have we painted it?
It has not been painted recently, um, I did have a couple pictures on my phone that, there's a couple little spots that should be probably. Um, and I don't know how long ago it's been, but it's not in bad disorder.
No, a few years ago, then we have, somebody come and powder washed it and cleaned it up.
Yeah, maybe four or five years.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Four years.
It's a special painting.
Just OD green.
It's OD green, okay. Oh, no, it looks to be.
They deal it to us as long as we maintain.
Maintain it.
Okay. Keep it in. It's satisfactory.
In case they ever need it back.
Yep.
Pretty sure they won't be asking for it back.
Bradgate's got Sherman tank over there they need to do something with.
So they, uh.
Sherman tank.
Where?
Bradgate.
Yep.
Yes, it is. It went off the books a long time ago.
So, is this, uh, everything in order with the army? They are okay with signing this, that?
I think so, this agreement we always sign.
Okay, well, I would make the motion then to authorize the chairman to sign the annual certification for the armor material status for the Hollitzer cannon.
Maybe doing it next year?
I'm, I'm making.
Yeah, first and a second, any more discussion?
I would put on there that we, you might start keeping a track of when we do any touch-up painting on it, so that we aren't sitting here.
It was a few years ago we had it powder washed.
Right, but I'm just saying, if we put it all aside now, that we touched up a few spots or whatever, then we at least know we did something or we didn't, we aren't sitting here.
And along those lines, being, mentioning something about touch-up paint, wouldn't worry about it so much to balance it this year, but next year when it gets nice, take a really hard look at it when the weather improves and make sure that if there's anything that needs to be done, it's done.
And usually it doesn't start in the spring, but I did not come across this until.
Yeah, I do remember, every year, the army will keep track of it.
Is that one in Bradgate, is that our responsibility or is that Bradgate's?
Bradgate BFW.
Perfect.
Just trying to find a home, 'cause they're gonna join over here.
That's what I wondered, that's what I'd heard anyway.
Can you park it on Main Street of Dakota City?
Uh-huh, yeah, we park it between post office and BFW. I'd like to see it, north of Worthington Park, people will stop to look at it.
It would be a nice thing for, sit at, sit at a park somewhere.
It's painted kind of camel for that right now.
The green or the desert that thing?
I imagine everything's stuck on it.
That's what I was thinking, I mean.
A pretty heavy-duty crane and a pretty heavy-duty flatbed, yeah. Trying to pick it up, trying to move it.
Is it, is it green or desert camel?
It's, uh, kind of a greenish-yellow.
There needs to be the desert, moorish, green or whatever.
Been hand-painted.
All right, uh, did I do the vote on that?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
The opposed, motion carries on the balcony. Okay, now let's go down to authorize chairman to sign the engagement of services with Ailer's Cooney for human service, human resource services.
Yeah, this is, it's an agreement to, to continue an HR person with the legal, um, aspect. Um, Renee didn't have the legal attorney part, so this is just.
She, she sucked that out?
Yes.
I know we've been discussing this for a few months.
For a while now, yeah.
So I think it's something we need to move forward with.
Ailer's Cooney is a good, very good law firm.
We have some information on this previously, we just didn't have the official.
Right.
Uh, documentation to sign up with them, so therefore, I would make the motion for the chairman to go, sign engagement of services with Ailer's and Cooney TC for human resource services.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second, any more discussion?
Do you have one or five major engagement services?
Will you give us the contact information to all the partners for Ailer's and Cooney then?
Oh, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Do you want this, Jenna?
Let's do a quarterly report, so then you don't have to go back and take everything, so back.
I had no meetings.
I was supposed to have one on Wednesday and it got canceled that morning, I didn't realize until later, so I had nothing.
Had animal house out there at six-thirty on Wednesday night, thirteenth. A good discussion, they got cats everywhere. If anybody needs a cat, they're two for one. They've got so many cats out there that it's, every cage is full and three for you.
Do we have any cats? Do we have any farm cats available?
I was gonna say farm cats.
Don't know about farm cats, but they sure got a bunch of cats.
Oh, yeah, make sure it could be a farm cat.
I was gonna say any cat. As long as it's got claws, it could be a farm cat.
Sure four dogs, some pretty nice dogs, one of them really a nice-looking dog, but, but, then they was all good up.
I mean, they've been working hard on this TNR program that they have, where they trap them, neuter them.
Money's gone on it.
Is it?
Yep. For this year.
Are the dogs.
What's that?
What breed are the dogs, do you know?
Your name, but they're there, I think.
Whatever breed you want, there's probably some mixture in there.
Did they get rid of the big one?
That great big white one, they got rid of that.
That's what I wondered, I, I just see him walking, there's a kid that come up and walk him on the weekends.
Well, he's gone, they got a husky in there, pretty nice-looking, and, uh, clean and everything. Only got three other ones, I think, that, uh, good dogs, they raise their disposition on the door, you know. They say they're all good dogs, but one's noisy and I'll get out of, he barks at everything.
Perfect.
But other than that, well, they got some, a lot of cats, so.
A lot of puss cats.
Meet and greet room down there, I think they got a mother and half a dozen cats, kittens and.
Quite often they get cats that are about ready to have kittens, so when they do, well, one cat turns into nine real quick.
Yeah, they got.
Yeah. We had two of them in there here last month. This month, we just got every kind of a cage, clear for them, some of them two and three in a cage.
Wow.
All around.
Do they have a website with pictures?
Yeah.
I think on.
Yeah, she does a good job out there pushing things.
Anything else on Animal Shelter? Nope, I didn't have any official extracurricular meetings last week.
Well, I was supposed to be at the dog one, but I was down at the crib last week, so.
Well, hopefully through the.
I am better.
The, uh, discussion that, that some people in and around the county would need some cats, they should go take a look at them.
Yeah.
Yeah, they got lots of cats.
Every time you mention.
Coming in, I know two others coming over.
Oh, boy.
Okay, well, looks like we can move into drains then.
Do you, I did include them.
Oh, you got some, I seen the maps.
The map of the broadband area.
Yeah, what is the gist of all that?
I questioned her.
This is a.
The other day.
Another grant thing that they have coming up, it opened up, I think this week for applications.
The federal government has put another two hundred million dollars into the broadband, according to WHO. according to WHO radio. Um, the other day they were talking about this, two hundred million dollars that go to all the counties to, why? So I called Trish and asked her what was our coverage, which led me to, um, visit with Kurt Huntermark. And he said, pretty much like her map shows, that the majority of the spot in Humboldt are covered. There are some spots, like you said, a year's...
Twelve would add up to an area of...
Well, that's what I heard.
Dollar.
Dan just told us that, but...
But it shows on the map as being...
Covered, right.
An area.
Right.
Yeah.
No, it's not, it's like turtle speed.
Well, that was his recommendation is to try to, um, either, A, call the governor's office and see what the plans are, because I said, I mean, if we did some of this, do we, would we own it, would, uh, whoever the provider is own it? I mean, how does that work? And he says, I don't do this anymore, so...
And, you know, I was kinda curious, it's a good question to ask, because we've heard this for how long?
Yeah.
It sounds like broadband, sounds like a broad definition of needing better internet. You know, I'm not exactly entirely sure what broadband means. I mean, some places have great internet, some places don't, like Dan said. I mean, there's means of getting internet, satellite, you know, bounce off towers, she said your mom and dad had a tree cut down to get anything. So, yeah, I think we need more information on this as to what would it take, if there's money out there, that, from the county standpoint, what do you do?
Well, on the radio, all they said was is the last hundred million that they had put up went like lickety-split.
Yep.
So he said when this comes available, whoever is looking better have their ducks in order because it's gonna go quick.
Yep.
So, but when you saw ducks in order, what are you...
What are we getting in order?
What do we do?
I agree.
I don't have any idea.
I, I do know from talking to some contractors that do a lot of directional boring, there's other places in the state. Now, this may not be countywide, but it's certainly probably city or community-wide. They're putting in a bunch of fiber optic, which obviously is internet speeds and that. So there's, these projects are going on around the state for internet improvement, but like Bruce said, what does that mean? You know, they say broadband, oh, that sounds great, but you gotta get the, the nuts and bolts of it in order, especially if there's any money to be had.
Well, that's just it, the fiber optic part, you gotta have enough subscription to be able to make that for companies worthwhile to afford it. It's pretty expensive, so...
But I think through that...
At the annual meeting at OCIO that was also coming up in cyber, they are also helping with that, that broadband too.
And that's the point that the governor's been trying to make for the last few months or probably a year, that they're trying to open more.
Rural areas.
I don't know what, I'm sure the Des Moines metro area gets a lot more action than what Humboldt County gets, because there's more...
The denser the population, the more feasible it is.
Yeah.
Supposedly this is supposed to help the rural areas, all of this.
Well, that was the purpose of the federal government dumping another two hundred million in, according to the radio.
That all makes sense, but I agree with Bruce, what, what does that mean? What, what do you have to, there's always gonna be some hoops to jump through to get money for anything.
Right.
So I guess all we do is keep snooping?
Yep, keep finding the person that can explain this to you and how does, how do you, uh, implement?
When do you have to apply for it, Chris? I'm wondering if the application opens? Today? Open today, okay.
Well, I'd say we apply.
Apply, yeah, see what we can do.
Yeah, see if we can get it.
Maybe if you apply, they'll send you the...
Give you a little more information on it.
Well, I know there's, uh, high-speed internet that goes up to the old Livermore corner, uh, but it turns and heads towards Livermore.
It just snubbed the people in boat, went the other direction?
It went up one sixty-nine.
Oh. So then, and that's my question, does, does, would someone be responsible to take it from the one sixty-nine west toward boat?
It'd be the owner of the facility, and I'm trying to remember who it was that did it, I want to say like the company was Long Lines or something like that.
Well, you know...
Goldfield is within two miles of Hardy, um, I think they came out to P sixty-six and stopped there.
That Palmer or Palmer Way Northwest is the closest thing to, uh, that I know of. But communication...
Yeah, they got, they got, they got, the fiber optic comes up the Thor block top, feeds Humboldt.
Yeah, that's my, uh, my cloud, I think it is.
Is that?
Wester Callum's in your area. Cause they got Wester Callum at my place and then it comes up Lone Tree.
No, it doesn't come to my house.
It don't come all the way?
No, we don't have it. We don't have it.
It's close to your place, though.
Yeah, it's up at the Thor corner on Lone Tree Road, I know it's there, but...
Yeah, so when it comes from Eagle Grove across...
Sure, they weren't across this road.
Well, you might be on to something.
That ties the schools together, if I remember.
There's... Infrastructure out there, it just doesn't get everywhere.
Right.
So it's, maybe this is all about getting it from where it is to where it isn't.
Yeah, to kinda wrap up some of those spots that are dead and that got missed.
Yep.
The weird thing is that CenturyLink phone company offers internet in Livermore, but not in Humboldt. Is that tied to the cable?
I think the reason is what Ben said, it doesn't, it's not there. They can't offer it because they don't have a access to...
Right.
The infrastructure.
They don't think it's gonna be profitable, most companies are not gonna...
And that's the... Over, over in Wright County, over, no, that's Humboldt County, that's northeast of Thor, they got fiber optic out, uh, all the farm places.
Goldfield.
Goldfield access.
Access ran to all of the farm places.
Wouldn't that be sweet?
Yep, and I think that's, I think we might be kinda on to something, I know we're not, except Bruce being the technical wizard, but...
Well, that's why I called her when I heard it on the radio and I, and she was said, well, I got this map, I'll, I said, wanna copy this week, can I please?
So I think, I think we're on to how...
And that's probably why it's white over there by Thor, cause that, well, then people have the fiber optic run through their houses.
But...
If you zoom in, there's like itty-bitty ones that are not.
The little spots where they never ran it.
Yep, yeah, actually.
And it could be, cause nobody lives there anymore.
So then, farmers that have the dish that keep the, um, price, you know, they get the prices, is that bounced from satellite off the elevators out to them?
Most of them, I believe, are.
That's what, I didn't know.
A lot of them that can be provided that way, and sometimes that works it, sometimes that's not an option.
Oh, they got the satellite on the huge net.
But it's awful, real slow and it's not very reliable. Wind or...
Yeah, not like your dish network, if you can see the elevator, you've got a good place to bounce off the elevator too.
But there's trees and you're laying stuff.
N C N out of, um...
Flunder?
Flunder over there comes across, and if you see Gilmore elevator or Humboldt elevator, it bounced to it.
I think the auto elevator has one too.
Yeah, you gotta have a direct line of sight.
Lord elevator does.
I mean, we used to live, we had, we had a satellite, but it was like, everything had to be in the right order to be able to...
Those usually look pretty good too, if you have the line of sight.
Well, they don't have a trouble.
Yeah, my son's no place, you gotta climb his TV tower to talk on yourself.
Beach shed and it goes off the boat elevator, it seems to look real well. So there's other options, but if you don't have that option, and you don't have a high-speed line, then you might be in that.
I guess see what we come up with, sort of look at...
Make the request.
Run to the little towns, but they, they start out like a cloud, come to cloud over here, and then drop center's on... That's when they rush down. It ties the schools together.
So that would be a good one.
And there's, up here at the high school, they got two or three of them right on there to there, 'cause I'm by quest.
I think the town, the poor dodge is putting in their own.
I can relate to that. That they were gonna do their own.
I have really come and I lose internet probably at least once or twice a week. Do you have it, how long have you had it, Ken, though? Cause I've been debating about whether to go to...
I've only had it, I've had it since June, haven't had any problem.
No problem?
No.
Yeah, see, I, I still did it twice, at least like a week. We have to unplug it and restart it?
We've had them.
We stood up at B's now, Stan.
Well, I think it's, I think you're on the right track.
Yeah.
Think that the track is more information.
Okay.
Okay, do we need a motion to go into drainage?
I think we got our committee reports done, so I think...
Does it say anything else?
No, I think I'm good. Can I make that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor of going into drainage?
Aye.
Motion carries, we are in drainage.
Well, I have to restart the water, internet at least twice a week. And then restart it, and then if that doesn't work, then I can tell me.
Thank you, thank you for your services over here.
I don't know, some kind of baby or box, you know, or whatever. And then it takes, by the time you go through the, you know, you can't get a light.
I got a couple for you on the internet, yeah, just, they even know we're talking about this. What is that northwest?
Uh, N C N, maybe.
N C N?
That's our flower.
Yeah, flower. I'm sure, I know we have an internet in our seat chair to them, because just, it works, it's a sensor. I know that comes off the cloud. And it works well, I can't bull chop or something.
You have to have a direct line, not, you know, stand there, turn right to the other end.
Probably call it Monday. Except to the...
It's not really, it's earlier, is what we planned on doing.
But it's not very, it's not very good. It's a bad spot, yeah, it is. But is it, are they okay though, or do you think you could research that?
Actually, yeah.
I, I can look deeper, I kinda like the idea.
Oh, it's better, but I think that's what this, I think that's what it's, when they say broadband, I think that's what their thing is, to get the infrastructure, even the floor two there, but maybe they, this touch base on it, and, cause I got to think when Dave said that his daughter has that and...
Well, what about security, don't they need...
And all they're running at, and it, it's...
That's right.
The first thing we usually do, the transition.
There's gonna be a barrier to before they get fiber off.
That's what they need to do.
Well, I guess shut down the door if I do that. Cause that's what's her and usually... She has a good question about...
I've heard commentary for better reliable internet for, like, ordering their filters and stuff for all the machines. They sit in the shop, ask Tom.
Been provided.
I know, but you're familiar with that knowledge and the things that sometimes you do. So, I mean, it just might be an option, it might not be that.
We should get there, except for the first difficult part, the work, that's it.
You could put that N C N. You have to have it, cause everything you have, you gotta have an, you know, internet connection. And the easiest way to get it in our N C chat is just to load that in.
Thank you.
It's, uh, it's been really good.
I didn't know, I was gonna bring something up.
Like I said, it's not, it's not...
Oh, yeah, I read that paper too, it was in the...
On it, in fact, with the TV, but I use satellite.
Kurt, there, Kim, have you heard anything on Shawnee Terry and the...
Well, I guess he's one of two finalists.
No, it's Shawnee Terry.
They both got a meeting with the governor there, first week of November, and he seemed to think that if he would have, get appointed, he'd probably begin, you know, first of January or thereabout, so... Had to give you his notice, I suppose.
I've been trying to call just to find out what was going on.
I knocked on Friday afternoon, I caught him in between court hearings. Just wanted to hear a little bit about him.
Okay.
Yeah, I heard that, that right before I came.
Good morning, Kim, good morning.
Morning.
Okay, we have DD one oh three examining petition for improvement and appoint a civil engineer. We had some discussions, some local farmers and people involved in one oh three, and it sounded like they wanna move forward with an improvement.
Correct.
On the north side.
The actual petition that was signed was for an improvement versus a repair. Yep, so I just brought that in in case you all wanna actually...
And that was the one a couple of weeks ago that we talked about with the edge and the...
That was too rich.
Okay, and your brother.
Also, yeah.
If you just wanted to look at the original. I had actually sent Rick Hopper an email prior to the informal meeting, just asking if he had any types of surveys, plans, improvements, any previous information, and he had replied back with an email, thank you, that he was aware of the board's discussion regarding DD one oh three recently. We've worked in DD one oh three on several occasions and are very familiar with the district. If you get a petition for the study, we would be very interested in providing that study for you. So that was the email I received back from Rick Hopper. So now that we have the actual petition, you can go ahead and assign who you want for the civil engineer.
To do the preliminary report.
Well, your question the day that they were all sitting in here was, does anybody have any...
Reference.
Preference? There was no...
No comment.
No one...
I don't think they quite understood the process either.
I understand.
You know, they didn't, they don't, because I had some questions and I went over there and looked at, uh, why that improvement is needed, because of the water running down the right of way. And they wanted to make sure and show, you know, they'd mentioned that, that it's taking a different route, and it's quite evident that it is running, you know...
The wrong direction.
Essentially, although, uh, I questioned, since the elevator's improved, a huge area of fertilizer and such storage, and it's big, I think, I said, I think you're, you know, probably always gonna have some surface water going.
When you get them heavy rains, cause that's all, a lot of concrete, fresh rock.
It's a lot, and, but there is this system, one oh three is kind of right where that starts, and it just doesn't take it.
Well, it's been having hiccups for a long time, and anytime you put more concrete or rock...
Bigger area, greater area, yeah. So, but it isn't doing much to get rid of it, helping, because, and that was a discussion, and that's, I think it was a good discussion, it's the north section of that, goes around the lagoons and that's the one that goes into town, and that's the one that really seems to be bothering.
Yeah.
That needs to be upsized, really, that's why it needs to be an improvement.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to hire Jacobson Westergaard, they're familiar with it.
I agree.
They're working on it.
Okay, uh, first and second, any more discussion on it?
Uh, I'll just make the mention that they're familiar with everything in Humboldt County.
Yeah, they are.
Both of them. I mean, uh, I'm just going back to our last little project, which went smoothly, and that was with, uh, Colin Plingville, the younger engineer from Boilman Lake. That went very well, I mean, that would've, I think he would've been a, a good choice too, to...
Yeah, I think he would've...
Look at this, because like I said, nothing against Jacobson Westergaard, but they're gonna tell you that they have information on every district in our county.
Well, they've been, they've looked at it.
Yeah, but they've actually done it, I mean, they've been, they're working on it and do it that way. That's why I did the second, I agree with.
That was a minimal, uh, thing that they looked at, I think it was when, actually on the south side, when Bill Mansky put in the four hundred and some feet of improve, or not improvement, but replacement.
Replace some of the.
Yeah, and just looked at that and I think that was their involvement, was to just, hey, what do we do, well, yeah, go ahead, but, you know, you can't upsize it, but you can replace it. So they have that familiarity, but, you know, like I said, if you didn't get anything from, uh, landowners, you know, you just want a good job done for them, cause they're the ones paying for it.
They pay the bill. Okay, any more discussion on it?
I guess as long as the parameters are met, that we talked about the last time when the locations, the, all of that stuff and the as-built at the end are gonna be.
Done.
It's all gonna be spelled out.
Wild art.
Yeah, cause if we go through that, at the end of the project, and there's a malfunction. And I think, didn't you have a discussion of that, it's the engineer and the contractor is responsible?
Yeah.
And that's written into the contract.
It'll be written into the contract, that everything's provided, so that we don't have.
So the engineer's gonna make sure he's got the, uh.
We're not going through that again.
Not doing.
I agree with Bruce a hundred percent.
Someone came.
I agree with Bruce.
Come from, wherever they come from every day, that's not our responsibility, you've been the job, you're.
Make sure it gets done.
It's your, you, we're putting it in your hands, that's my opinion, so.
Okay, any more discussion, all in favor?
Aight.
Any opposed, motion carries. Kay, you can contact Jacobson Westergaard on that, Kim.
We're gonna put it on your lap.
Yeah.
And he, he was, um, included on the agenda, so he should be, I'm not sure if he's actually on the Zoom meeting.
I haven't seen him.
Okay.
Okay, now we have D D seven, review open ditch crossing and removal and options for repair or reconstruction. Uh, I know Bruce, you've been out and looked at this physically, haven't you?
I have, and I've also had a couple of phone calls on that, um, I went out, the day that, when David came and co-op, three weeks ago. And talked about that, um, that day, was the day that new co-op had issues with their computers, so I didn't work in the truck, so I went out there and Dave and I went down and rode, uh, his side by side, which was quite a sight, in case somebody has a picture of that.
I really would've liked to have taken a picture of that.
And I and his side by side, and I said, Dave, if somebody gets a picture of you two, us two big lugs in this thing, we'll never let this down. Um, anyway, we went down, looked at it. The blockage was there, and then the next thing, the next day, I get a phone call that someone had taken the thing out. So whoever heard our meeting, passed it on to whoever put this blockage in there, because it was removed. But now the issue is, is that thing has been there long enough, um, that it's got some silt that has backed up on the.
Cause it acted like a little dam and water comes, settles out the silt.
So on the north, on the west side of that, where it was, that rock was sitting, there's some rock or dirt in there. And Dave called me the other day and wanted to know, you know, he said, that needs to be cleaned out of there, because the blockage is out, but this silt is still there. And he says, I don't believe that should be put on the backs of the people that pay for the drainage, which, they didn't put that in there, so I guess, I said, we discuss it. He said, I can come in on Monday if you want me to, I said, well, I'm pretty sure we, we don't, we can talk about it, we'll get back to you, so. And then come down the pipe a little bit further, there's another blockage and that has rock in it, that they think that, whether the four-wheelers or kids, people out there driving in that quarry area, go down through our ditch. But we can't have people doing their own crossings in our, there has to be something that we either address or, so I guess that's what I, when I talked to Kim, how we handle what we're gonna do with this and. I don't really want someone out digging in our ditch that doesn't know what, how to find the bottom of it, and they end up digging it three foot too deep, or they didn't do anything to it, or, and it's gonna take a certain machine to be able to reach down there and pull this stuff away. So how do you, what do we do, how do we proceed?
I, see, Kim did a little research and, you know, about a questioning of a actual culvert pipe crossing, um, which, obviously, like Bruce said, if you had someone that wanted said crossing of any drainage ditch, that, in whatever district, they'd have to get approval. And as we know, it's at their expense, and I'm sure we'd grant it, but there again, if it'd be correct.
Elevation.
Elevation depth, all that stuff, just like.
I didn't actually make each of you a copy of this, but we actually have these plans from Jacobson Westergaard, that shows that exact location of where that crossing is and. You can see where the elevation of the ditch banks are, and I sent that back to Rick and I told him, this is the concern we have for this area right here. That it's approximately ten feet wide, that the rock, and I can go back fif- or twelve years on the beacon map, that shows that crossing's been there for a very long time. And my son knows the owner's son, and he's been out there and rode four-wheelers, and he said, it's been there at least fifteen years that he knows of.
Mm-hmm, which is probably the reason why we have some settling towards the west of the.
Right, that could be, so, I, well, I sent this, I sent this page back to Rick Hopper, and I, I just simply asked him, can you tell us from your notes, your surveys, ever, all the information that he has for this area, what size culvert would be appropriate? If they wanted to put that back properly.
Put some type of crossing in there other than just rock?
Right.
Which is gonna block it.
Right, because that's damming it, so, would, if they would put like three ten inch, three twelve inch, two fifteen, two.
Probably a ten footers would have to put in, ten or twelve.
Fourteen footer probably.
Yeah, it's gonna cost them twenty thousand dollars. Yeah, you can't just put a couple of small culverts in and cover them with rock, you can't do that.
But that's, that's what I'm asking Rick.
Yeah, yeah, you can't do that.
You know, is it, is it something that if that creek bed is only so many inches deep?
It doesn't make a difference how deep it is now, it makes a difference of what the potential flow of that ditch could carry, and so, yeah, I don't know.
Our ditch is always waiting for the biggest.
It's always waiting for the biggest.
Biggest rain that is coming, so that it takes the water away.
It could be easily be six to nine foot diameter culvert.
And that was. Well, they were bigger, it's like he says.
The one that's up, the pipe up there, that one's about, well, I didn't get down and measure it.
Right.
Cause I just didn't wanna go down into the water, but standing on top, it's about a twelve, ten to eleven foot.
It's big.
Yeah, I mean, it's just.
Not an actual crossing.
It's on the same, the same ditch, but a mile and a half north up there, uh, where Tom Ashwell used to live on that acreage beyond the east side of, or west side of the, that blacktop. It's about a mile and a half north, and they used to drive down through that with farm equipment, and then that was moved to the north edge of that property line, and it's about a ten to twelve footer.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not sure what the requirements are for farm crossing versus traveling in public, I know we have.
Yeah.
Higher requirements for what we have to put in.
Yeah.
The requirement would be the capacity.
Right.
Well, I think the question here is, it, it needs to be dredged out.
A little bit.
A little bit, and who pays that bill?
The adjacent landowners that put it in.
Well, and that's the, when, when it just automatically, it was gone, I don't know, we don't know who did it, we don't know who put it in there. That's the.
That could be why it's gone.
That's the pipe, that's up the pipe.
Because they don't wanna be responsible for it.
That's.
They're the ones that put the blockage there, so they should be responsible for the correction, to make it right, according to how it was, before they put that, yeah, before they put that in. That should be their responsibility, I would think.
Mm-hmm. Has the ditch bank been cut out where that crossing was, I mean, have, did it slope the ditches more than normal?
Well, they just pulled it away so that they can.
Drive down through it.
Yeah, and they're, I, I don't think they were going through with farm equipment.
No, you just, I mean, unless you, they just put rock right back in afterwards.
Well, you were talking about that, how it would be to have it back to your original?
If you put, if you filled the banks back in, I would assume they cut the banks back so that it wasn't straight up and down dredged edge, cause those are one to one or two to one.
Yeah, Bruce, Bruce actually sent a, a picture, and you can see where, at one point, that had all been cleaned out, but the spoils had never been leveled.
Yeah.
So they, they pretty much just pushed them back so they could drive four-wheelers through.
Got it. Well, it's curious about the history of this, it's been there a long time, to some degree.
Mm-hmm.
And other than right now, I don't know that it's ever caused a significant problem, you know, it has probably backed up a little bit of silt and whatnot, but, yeah, it.
Really take.
When they wanted to make that a freedom park. Something to that effect.
Yep.
Back when there's some kind of, maybe you might wanna call development potential or something to do with it, but, you know, I mean, yeah, it should probably be cleaned a little bit in that area, maybe. But this discussion is, you need someone that's qualified to run around with each backhoe or excavator.
Right.
To do it properly.
It's probably gonna cost more to locate than, I would assume that it's gonna be the digging and what little silt's in there, I don't know.
I'm just kinda interested that all of a sudden, poof, gone.
And the fact that it was taken out, cause, yeah, I think Rick said, they got word that, you know, that's, don't like that, so.
We did send a letter.
Yeah.
To the owner.
That was Monday, September twenty eighth, that was the day we had our meeting, I went from the meeting and prepared the letter, and before it went out in the mail, I was notified that they had removed it. But I, I still sent the letter. Right. But basically, I was just noting, um, drainage code four sixty eight, one forty nine for diversions, obstructions, breakdowns, um. And then I.
What was that number, number four eighty six one?
Four six eight, one four nine, and basically, I just paraphrased, um, you cannot divert, have obstructions impede, or fill up any ditch, drain or water course, or anything that breaks down, injures any levee or any banks or basins. Or if you obstruct or engage in travel or agricultural practices causing injury to any improvement of the drainage district. And then I just signed off that the Board of Trustees would like to discuss the situation prior to passing any resolution. Please contact the Auditor's Office prior to October eleventh at this phone number, and I've had no, no response. But, like I said, that had been removed the same day the letter was sent out, the same day of the meeting.
So I guess my question is, is in their eyes, they moved, removed the one, now, and the other person that reported it's eyes, they removed the obstruction, but there, it's silt.
But the obstruction caused a problem.
Yes, so, and his question is, if there's been stuff that's built up over the obstruction being there, he doesn't feel that it should be the district's.
Expense.
Expense to clean that out of there, which I guess I tend to agree.
Yeah, I would agree with them also.
I wouldn't think that the entire district should have to pay for them to play.
Right.
So I guess that was, I told him we'd visit about it, and I would call him back, so, here we are.
So, from this point, do I send another letter stating that this needs to have some type of a follow-up with just an inspection from like an engineer, just making sure that every scope is covered?
Well, as soon as you do that, there's a cost incurred to the district.
I know.
I would send them another letter and request their presence at a meeting.
I think that's a good idea, to even have a discussion with them and, and see if they're willing to, uh, take care of the problem.
That they create.
Rather than getting into more, spending more money than we have to.
That is the opportunity for going out and looking at this supposed second crossing. There's supposedly one down the road, or down the, towards Rutland, up there off the, the blacktop.
Is it on the same property or is it?
Mm-hmm.
Probably should go on and take a look.
I just, they told me that if you went up there towards the, there's a driveway and walk up the trail, that you could basically see it.
Okay, well, I can run out and take a look, if you wanna go with, or something, cause you're working today, but I can sneak out and take a look, um.
Now, I don't think anybody's trying to get into a big argument, big.
I, that's why I said, let's try to keep it as simple as we can, let's talk with the land, have them, invite them to come into the meeting, we'll have a discussion with them and see.
And I'm sure they're really farming.
What they're willing to.
I do.
And I, I had even thought, too, of giving him the option to, um, call and set up an appointment that you guys could, somebody could actually go out there and meet with him in person and put your eyes on it with him. But it's not a bunch of people out there on private property.
Well, that's my concern, I don't wanna be out there wandering around and it's clearly close to.
Send them a letter, request them either to show up here or to call the supervisor and a couple of us will look at it.
I'll put my number on, I think I have his number, but I'd gladly meet him, or a couple of us could go out and meet him.
Yeah, I think you'd wanna have two.
Yep, I would say two.
I wouldn't ever do anything separately, singly, you always wanna have two.
It's got the cheaters on, so it's.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Well, I, I mean, it says here, right in the drainage law, it's a serious misdemeanor by doing that.
I think if you can determine that there really is any true technical blockage.
And it says here also that the, after, uh, being notified after three days, the expense will be, uh, passed on to the persons who did such blockage. So pretty clear in the drainage law whose expense it is.
Yep, well, that takes care of that, give them the opportunity to remedy it.
Yeah, I, I, it's, just they come in and visit with us and we'll hire somebody to correct the problem.
This was before we left the last train.
So they're aware that they will be getting the bill for it.
How much water it was back then.
I think somewhere along the line, you have to determine what's the extent of it.
You don't, you're not gonna clean a mile or bit.
Well, and there's the thing, unless that ditch has been groomed fairly recently, there's gonna be some amount of sediment in that entire ditch.
Yeah.
So, where do you start and stop?
Yeah.
Long and tall.
You know, it's just one person's opinion that this is a problem.
It's well recovered.
And I said, as soon as you mention engineer expects a bill.
West side where the.
To look at it.
Silk and stuff is.
And if it's a, something that's egregious, like you said, and it's just a small area, you want a qualified contractor.
Come in and dip it out.
Come in and dip it out, but that's where you get a little.
It's a little gray area as to how much damage was caused.
Right, and, you know, what are you basing it on, I'm sure that that ditch would, the entire system probably is okay, but could we, if you looked at it, there'd be some amount of cleanup that could be done, you know, even away from these areas.
Sure.
So that's where you have to make that.
I mean, I'm guessing they haven't probably done much up there for, probably since the last time they did all the.
Yeah, I don't, having that ditch cleaned.
Yeah.
Well, that, all the dirt, this, on, along the farm area, that was all leveled, but all the stuff along the quarry was never leveled, it just left there and that, and the grass is several feet tall, so it's been years, it's been growing like that, so. But if she has it on beacons for.
Yeah, beacon, the beacon map will go back twelve years, and my son's guessing it's probably been closer to fifteen, and who knows how long. And who knows how long it had been there. But you can kind of see the, the bright coloring on beacon. The further back you get, the rock gets brighter white, so I, I guess fifteen years would be pretty close. And it's never impeded enough water that anybody's ever had any problems.
That's what I'm saying.
But it's now that it's cleaned out, how much further? And is it something, is it something they can do? If they know what the specs need to be and hire their own contractor to do it? And that's where, yeah, you definitely need to meet with them personally. Whether it's here or on site.
Yeah.
Well, I agree with Rick. I don't think you need to pull it out of proportion because I don't think.
No, it could be something done really simple.
Yeah.
But let's see if we can have them. We'll, we'll, this is what they're willing to do.
Okay, I'll pull the water together.
Forcing the issue.
Yep, just make them aware of that.
Just get back to where it was and get through it.
All we need to do.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else?
Anything else in drainage?
I would send a letter, um, certified.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So we know that they received it.
Mm-hmm.
Please.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay.
Motion for a drainage.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to adjourn.
You're getting all the good stuff.
He's getting all yours.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Your adjourned at nine.
Forty-two.